Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Special City Council Meeting of December 19th, 2017. It is now seven o'clock. We ran a little over on the previous meeting. With that, I see no ministers out there, so we'll start with a period of silent prayer. If everybody will join me in that, please. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The purpose of this meeting is as follows: Final public hearing on tentative millage rates, annual operating, enterprise and capital budgets, and proposed water, sewer, and solid waste utility enterprise charges for fiscal year 2018. At this point, I think the city attorney, you're up.
Yes, Mayor. At this time, I'll read all the ordinances and resolutions that you will be addressing this evening. And each one of these ordinances and resolutions will be voted on separately, and of course, anyone here that I'd like to be heard as to any of the ordinances or resolutions, you can fill out a card and put that in, and we'll call you before we vote on each item. So there'll be a hearing as to each item. Ordinance Number 26, 2017: An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, providing for the millage for the operation of the City of Titusville, and voted debt service levy for fiscal year 2018, and providing for an effective date. Ordinance Number 27, 2017: An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, adopting the general and related budgets of the City of Titusville for the fiscal year 2018, providing for an effective date. Resolution Number 14, 2017: A resolution of the City of Titusville, Florida, establishing a formal fiscal policy on a utility return on investment for the general fund on the city's business-type activities, and providing for an effective date. Resolution Number 13, 2017: A resolution of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the schedule of fees for water and sewer service by increasing the charges and rates, and providing for an effective date.
Okay. We have a staff presentation?
Just a second, Mayor, there's...
You've got a couple more.
Oh, sorry. You stopped.
Ordinance Number 29, 2017: An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, adopting the Enterprise Fund and Capital Improvements Program Budgets to the City of Titusville for fiscal year 2018, and providing for an effective date.
That the last one? Okay.
Yes, sir. Just as a reminder, at the 14th September Special Council Meeting, council tabled this agenda item to tonight. And what staff's recommending is you conduct the final public hearing on the city's proposed budget for FY '18, read the related ordinances to adopt the final operating and voted debt millage service rate, adopt the final operating, enterprise, and capital budgets, and conduct the final reading of the resolutions proposing the FY '18 water and sewer solid waste rates. And our great Assistant City Managers and Budget Director are here to give you a presentation. It's loaded on your computers.
Tom, and Mayor, before that, I did, I noticed that ordinance Number 28, 2017 was not read. I'd like to read that title at this time.
No, right ahead, sir.
Ordinance Number 28, 2017: An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending Section 16, 116 of the Code of Ordinances, by amending and establishing an increase to the residential monthly charge for solid waste and recycling fees, and by amending Section 16, 117 of the Code of Ordinances, by amending and establishing an increase to the commercial dumpster and commercial can monthly charges for solid waste and recycling fees, and increasing the commercial dumpster rental fees, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, sir. Staff has a presentation? I see something's going on. I'm not sure what it is.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. As you indicated, this is the final public hearing required to adopt the fiscal year 2018 annual operating and capital budget. Just a brief recap of the budget process. As you recall, on July 11th, City Manager proposed his, submitted his proposed budget with a millage rate of 7.675 mils, and a voted debt millage rate for the general acquisition riverfront bonds of .4079 mils. Back on July 25th, council approved a tentative millage of 7.9250 mils. We held a workshop on the 16th of August. We held the first public hearing on September 6th, and we tabled the 14th final public hearing in order to have the meeting today. And I believe that we can have to take a brief recess because we have the wrong presentation up there. If we could get five minutes to get the right presentation.
Yes, sir. I'll declare a recess of five minutes. Well, seven minutes. 7:15, we'll be back. It's 7:15. We're back in order, if you please. We were at the presentation, sir. If you will go ahead with it.
Yes, sir. We're waiting for the PowerPoint, and this is the correct version.
All right.
Again, I just did a recap of the budget process. And as a requirement of Florida statute, Chapter 200, at both the first and final public hearings, City Council must adopt its millage rates before it adopts the operating and capital budgets. And the public may speak and ask questions before the City Council adopts any of the proposed budget-related ordinances. This slide should be familiar to council. This is the strategic plan for fiscal year 2018 with the four goals and the supporting objectives. Now, upon adoption of this budget, the staff will develop internal performance measures which measures our progress towards reaching these goals. The entire fiscal year 2018 proposed budget is approximately $118, almost $119 million, and this pie chart shows where the expenditures, the water resources, general government, and public safety make up the majority of our budget. Drilling down one layer to the general fund, you can see that public safety represents about half of the $43 million general fund, followed closely by general government and public works and non-departmental. The millage rate for 2018 is built on, the fiscal year budget is built on a proposed millage rate of 7.6575 mils, which is 6.29% above rollback, and yields an additional $762,000 in ad valorem revenue over last year's budget. Now, during the public hearing, council is required to discuss the percentage increase in millage over the rollback rate to fund the general fund budget, and the purposes for which the ad valorem tax revenues are being increased. Again, council can hear comments from the public regarding the increase in ad valorem revenues and the millage rate. And the fiscal year 2018 approved tentative millage is 7.950 mils, which is 10% above rollback, and yields an additional $428,000 in ad valorem revenue, which council can decide to allocate as it sees fit during this process. As we stated earlier, council, the fiscal year 2018 budget is proposed at a millage rate which is 6.29 cents above the rollback, generating $762,000. The proposed use of that, those dollars is as follows: $615,000 for law enforcement, which consists of nine radio consoles with hardware and software, and 50 handheld radios, and for fire and emergency services, $165,000 for 44 handheld radios and one base radio. In comparison to our peer cities, you can see that Titusville, with the proposed and tentative millages, have the third highest millage in the county, right behind Palm Bay and Satellite Beach. But when you drill down further to the proposed per capita ad valorem taxes, you can see that Titusville has among the lowest per capita in taxes, slightly higher than Palm Bay and Beavard County.
Could you explain that in a little more detail as to why that is?
That's a, per person, in the City of Titusville, the average tax, ad valorem taxes are about $200, I believe, $50 per person, where some of the other cities such as Satellite Beach and Atlantic and Cocoa Beach, their tax burden is upwards of $800 per person.
And that's caused because our property values are lows, therefore, the number has to be high on the other end.
Yes, sir.
But per capita, we're third from the bottom. Just want to make sure the audience knows.
Yes, sir. That's a very important metric.
If I may, just one point of clarification. This is based on the proposed millage rate, not the tentative millage rate, because I know we've thrown a lot of numbers at you. So that's based on the 7.6575.
This is the tax house, which shows where the tax dollars go for a typical house with an assessed value of $122,000. As you can see, the largest percentage of ad valorem revenue goes to fund the Beavard Public Schools at 37%, or $637, followed by the City of Titusville gets about a third or so of the property taxes which are assessed, and then followed by the county, and then there's a number of smaller MSTUs and special taxing districts for the total tax burden of approximately $1,708. And that's at the proposed property tax. Now, should council decide to go up to the tentative, then the total tax bill would be a little bit higher at $1,727, the total tax bill, but the percentages remain roughly the same, with Beavard Public Schools getting the $637,000, $637 per home, and then the City of Titusville with a slight increase to $604. As you recall, back on August 16th, we had a presentation by PRMG, our rate consultant, regarding the proposed 3% increases in both the sewer and water rates. And for a typical residential monthly bill at 5,000 gallons, 3% increase would yield roughly a $2.33% increase in your bill. So your bill would go up from about $77 to a little over $80. For a typical commercial monthly bill, the increase would be about $2.98. Now, for a larger commercial facility using approximately 42,000 gallons, right now, that bill would be approximately $700. And if you implemented 3% across-the-board increase, it would go up about $21 to $721. So how does that rate compare to other peer cities? You can see, we're about in the middle. We are lower than the City of Melbourne, City of Palm Bay, and City of Cocoa, and we are just slightly above Beavard County. And just, you know, for that, for those rates, we just had, for Hurricane Irma, you may have noticed that both Melbourne and Cocoa had some issues with the quality of water, while we were able to maintain high-quality water throughout that event. So that's kudos to Water Resources for providing high-quality water during the recent events. So, moving on to our action items, Bridget's going to cover some of the items that you discussed at the first public hearing, and some recommendations as far as budget.
Okay, well, as we go through the following slides, just as a reminder, that the tentative millage rate yields an additional $427,650 in revenues over the proposed rate. And with those, you can either adjust the millage rate to fund any budget modifications that you wish, or you could just keep the budget as is, or you could do a combination of both. If you all recall, for the last two, the budget workshop and the last public hearing, there was a list of about $10 million worth of additional funding considerations that we brought to you all, and then we whittled them down as we've gone through the budgeting process, but that was the starting number. At the first budget hearing, we, you all reduced the special events line items by $34,000, and you had agreed at that point to redirect funding as follows: $30,000 to youth engagement, $3,000 to beautification in the South Street area, and then use an additional $1,400 to reduce the general fund millage rate levy. You had also decided from that big list that you would consider an additional 0.5% COLA adjustment for staff, consider funding to dispatchers for PD, and also investing in an additional development services inspector to accommodate all of the growth. This next slide is just kind of a history. I apologize for it being small, but we kind of tried to put the history of special events on this slide. So if you can see, in 2017, there was $110,000 that was budgeted for special events. The request for '18 came in at $117,000. Saff recommended cutting across-the-board 35%, which reduced it by $41,000. And at the first public hearing, we came to you all with a recommendation of about $80,000 in special event funding. At the end of the first public hearing, council recommended a $45,000 funding level for special events, and the special events are listed on that slide. You all have that. In addition to those changes, we also talked about, showed you all some additional funding considerations. Some of these we have to put in the budget, some of them we don't. These are the additional considerations you all talked about at the first public hearing. If you funded all of these, that would yield an additional .1433 mils over what's in the proposed budget, which would generate another $230,000 of revenue. And each of the components that you all had talked about is shown on the slide. Additionally, we, these are some administrative changes that we need to do because, and we discussed these at the first public hearing. We did have an increase in state revenues we didn't plan on, and then the rest of this is primarily to record the SAFER grant that we, that the firefighters got. We got notified in July. And then the additional $15,000 is to use, utilize forfeiture dollars to fund body cams for the police department, or the storage for body cams. This next slide is already outdated. The water utility portion is the same. Because of the water rate study, there was a change in revenue, so we had to adjust their budget accordingly. The CRA fund, the $13,000 that we, that for the maintenance, for the part-time service worker, was included in the $134,000 that the CRA board approved at the previous meeting. So that will change to the $134 based on the previous meeting. An additional, and then an additional adjustment at the last meeting was, the CIP project proposed as part viewing structure was changed to hurricane repair, so that $125,000 will be adjusted towards that if you approve it as part of the budget. With those changes all being disclosed, at this point, it's time to... With those changes all being disclosed, at this point, it's time to, for council actions, which is, I guess, Richard, you've already read the budget ordinances, so now I guess it's time to open the final public hearing and then amend the budget as necessary by council.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. If any member of the public would like to come up to speak, this is the turn.
We have two cards.
I'm sorry, you have, we have cards?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
Debbie Shuler.
Debbie Shuler, 42nd District, this budget is crazy. I don't know how you all do it. First of all... Sorry. Do you want me to do that again?
No, please.
This is crazy. First of all, we can't get a bill on the wa, on water. Don't, don't do, don't raise the rates on the water. We get a bill for an empty building that has no toilets, no sinks, no spigots, no nothing. It has a line coming in from the street, but everything else is taken off. We get a bill for $61 a month. Please don't raise the water rates. We got crazy water rates. The police and fire, do whatever you can for those guys, and please do whatever you can for their, our Friday Night Live events. I hate seeing that budget cut. Over the years, you all have been really supportive. We understand that, we appreciate it. We think that our downtown events attract businesses, attract people. Yes, we have issues, but you're, the city helping us with the street closure and the police has been an awesome, awesome thing. Our themed events get bigger and better every year. Our vendors are selling out every, every month. Most of them are selling out of their products. Many of the merchants rely on our monthly event to make their rent. We think that the reason that there are businesses coming down is because we're having these monthly events. There's not a lot of things for people to do in Titusville. Yeah, there, I mean, there is. You can go fishing, you can go kayaking, there is a ton of stuff to do, but a family-friendly night event coming out free, live music, where can you go for that? So we would like to keep this going. The, let's see, I don't know, how, how long do I have?
Five minutes.
Five minutes, okay.
Oh, is it, I'm sorry, it's three minutes now.
Oh, no.
Most of the time I was here, it was fine.
The flashing lights going across the street, the Downtown Titusville Merchants Association argued and argued for y'all to do something about crossing the streets, because our nice little closed-in streets didn't slow the traffic down. But thank God for that crosswalk, and thank God y'all put it in, because that slows our traffic down and saves lives. We also were instrumental in, in getting y'all to put lights in the Julia Street parking lot, which was tremendous for safety reasons, all in itself. And the welcome center with the bathrooms. We asked for years for bathrooms, whether it was the bike trail that made y'all do it, or whoever, we don't really care, we got it. And we didn't, we're not giving, getting any money for this, but we like people to be able to come down. Please give us our money back.
Mr. City Manager?
I got more pages.
Would you explain why they get a bill every month?
It's in the ordinance.
There are, well, there are reasons for that, and...
It's a major component of the fixed charges. It's the water and sewer availability. It's to fund the infrastructure which brings the line to that particular parcel.
I know, I understand.
It's not arbitrary, and it's not just on that, it's part of, you know, part of the capacity being there for whoever eventually moves in.
It's a standard practice of every municipality.
I understand. I, that was, that was an example. The building that we use water in, we have a two-story auction warehouse that's used water constantly. Our bill was probably $35 a month, so I said, let's just go put in a sink, and our bill will come down. But now, if you raise the rates...
I'm not sure you want to continue discussing this. Next card, please.
Gretchen McMichael.
Hi, I'm Gretchen McMichael. I own McSweet's Downtown, and I am a segway, Debbie gave me a great segue, for Downtown Merchants Association. I'm the current president of Downtown Merchants Association. I hope three minutes is going to be enough, because I have quite a bit to say. Currently, I'm sure you all are aware, our downtown is, you could call it on-life support. One of the things that I've been looking at for two and a half years is brown paper on windows. Our downtown landscaping needs work. We have a lot of things that need to be done in downtown. We need to attract people downtown. Our Friday Night Lives do that. We have 2,000 to 4,000 people come down when we don't have a hurricane. We have local talent being used, we have local vendors making money, we have local businesses making money. It helps make my rent. Debbie is correct. And it will have an impact if you decrease the funding. By that, I mean, there will be businesses who think twice about staying in downtown. I need the money, other businesses need the money. I actually had one person tell me that they would not stay open without that once-a-month injection of funds. You need to think about this. These businesses rely on the Friday Night Lives, which means we rely on you to help us pay for the police and the street closures. We can't do it on our own. If you want a viable, vibrant downtown, someone has to pay. We work very hard on these street parties. I don't know, I know you all attended the pie-eating contest, but if you could see...
Please don't mention that.
Well, I just remember a white beard. This is important to our community. It is a focal point. It should be a focal point, whether it's Main Street, after that last CRA meeting, that was interesting, whether it's Main Street, whether it's DTMA, whether it's Chamber of Commerce, we need a viable downtown. Currently, the Downtown Merchants Association Friday Night Live is your best bet for keeping a viable, robust downtown going until we have a, if you want to call it a resolution to the problem. And I would hope, and I would ask, that you continue to fund $13,000, which is in the proposed budget. We'll not do it. We will have to stop having the Friday Night Lives. I think it's unfair to the people of Titusville, and I think it's unfair to the businesses downtown, including me. Anyone have any questions? Otherwise, thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions? Yes, go ahead.
I do have a request, or a question. We had talked about the Indian River Festival, and if that was actually going to take place. Did we find out whether the Indian River Festival is going to take place?
It is according to Kathy's.
It is not, because I would propose taking that money and moving that over to Friday Night Live.
May I readdress? Is that okay?
Sorry.
Can I readdress?
Yeah, I'll make, I'll ask council to give you extra time.
Oh, thank you very much.
I'd make that motion.
Make the motion. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Yes?
Thank you very much. I do appreciate it. Currently, the estimate that I have, and this is just an estimate, you'll have to forgive my lovely notes, street closures, they're approximately $1,400 a street closure, times 12 is $16,800. Police are 655, times 12 equals 7,860. That's a bare minimum of $24,660. That's what we need, just as a bare minimum, to keep on going. We have funds to pay for bands, we have funds to pay for our cleanup. We do that. We do that now, but we cannot do anymore. I'm a very small business. We have other very small businesses. We're trying to keep it alive. We are very proud of our downtown, and we are just waiting until all of those other businesses come online. We have Grand Martini, we have a restaurant, we have, I'm trying to think what else, Chloebris has been bought. We have to be able to hold on. $24,660 is the bare minimum we need to hang on. And those are just guestimates. Those are not actuals. That's just what we've been told. So I'm sure your accounting would have a better idea of what that actual cost would be.
Yeah, real closures run about 3,000.
Okay.
And it's about 350 for police and 350 for fire.
Okay. We were told that we had an elevated number of police, that it was around 600 to 650.
Yes, anytime there's alcohol, that they will have an elevated number of police officers.
I wish there were more sometimes, but no. We, I don't know if you all have received this, we, I have a customer who also has seen some of the things going around. It's come to the attention of Titusville citizens, the city council might be considering cutting the budget for the downtown street parties. She goes on, and she says that she relies on these, these are family-friendly, that she brings people in from out of town, they go to the street parties when they're on, that the local talent that she listens to are quality. We do have people that appreciate these. They aren't being put on just for our sakes and our bottom line. It is a community we're trying to build, and we need your help.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for this.
Ms. Stokel?
I had a question.
Go ahead.
Is the Let It Snow event, do you guys put that on, or do you guys do a, a street party in addition to that during the month of December?
We do not put it in addition to. We do help her...
Okay.
...to a great extent. We coordinate very closely with her on the Let It Snow.
And then, so you guys don't do an additional street party?
No, we do not.
Okay, so, and then have you guys done any tracking to see which months seem to do better than other months?
Invariably, Celtic Crazy, which is March, we have, we have, probably have four, plus we're also, as a DTMA president, we're trying to do a couple new things. Instead of Oktoberfest, originally, the police and the fire department were going to be, do a big Oktoberfest, so we backed off on the Oktoberfest. Now we're going to do, it's going to be space and health. Since it's so close to October, we're going to have a costume party, Star Trek, Star Wars, you know, that type of thing. Rocket Town Church is going to do the band. We've got, you know, tying it all in with space. We're, from what we hear, we're, we've also tied in with our Infinite Mushroom comic. They have Comic-Con cosplayers coming in. It's going to be, it sounds like we're getting a lot of buzz on it. We also have quite a few that are not as. Our August one, if we had fire hoses in the street, it'd probably be a lot more popular, but...
The vendors sold out.
Oh, that's true.
When the rains stopped.
That's true. After the, Debbie just reminded, thank you, Debbie. After the heavy rains that we had, the vendors did sell out. We had a hot dog guy that, I went out at 8:30, because I didn't have time to get anything to eat, and he says, "Don't have anymore." But I thought you got rained out. It's been, we've had great responses, and we're expecting greater. We've got things that we're doing with Downtown Merchants Association, like trying to get a website online, and getting an updated website that's going to be a draw and a carrot for our vendor, for our businesses.
That's awesome.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I would ask that you hold any motion until after we get, get through the public part, okay? Next card, please.
We have no more cards.
Oh, well, there you go. Okay. I guess it's time for council to discuss, oh, no, we got two more up there. Ms. Stokel?
That was true.
That was the last one? Vice, no, Member Nelson, you.
That was me.
That was you.
The other question I had was the Tyco Air Show. We had talked about $5,931. Oh, sorry. The other question I had was the Tyco Air Show. We had talked about $5,931, and I thought we were going to get some more information on that, what that was supposed to be for, what the, what the proposal was. Did we get that information?
It was police.
It was police?
They, they use the volunteer fire department now to do that?
Well, at the risk of being shot at my rotary club, I would suggest that maybe we take $1,000 out of that and $1,000 out of the chili cook-off. I make it shot Tuesday, but, you know.
Please add a motion. Do we make the motions at this, at this point, or wait on them?
Whatever deliberation you want to do to, and again, my understanding is you reduce special events to redirect that funding to go to youth engagement, beautification of South Street, and reduced millage. So if that's what council's current idea is, we'll still have to further develop those two items, because we're not sure what, what or how we're going to fund youth engagement programs, and further develop the beautification of South Street areas to what that means, but that can certainly be done later, should council choose to continue with that. But that's our understanding, is the reduction of the special events went to those items.
So can I make that motion?
Sounds to me like you can.
Can I move that we take the money from the Indian River Festival, which was, we were recommending $5,000, that we put that over in the Friday Night Live budget, and that we take $1,000 out of the Tyco Air Show and the Rotary Chili Cook-Off, and put that in the Friday Night Live budget? That would be my motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
I have a question. Can I ask a question on that?
I guess, since I haven't had a second, we'll put the motion in abeyance, and you can ask a question.
And I can't, I can't second until I know. Tell me more about the $5,900 to the Tyco Air Show. I know we discussed that last time. What is that for?
It's a, it's a two-and-a-half-day event. It's a Friday night, all day Saturday, and all day Sunday.
I, I understand what the show is, and our contribution is the $6,000 almost. What do, what is that for?
That's for police officers.
Okay. I thought you said something about volunteer, right, okay.
No, we used to do, our fire department used to support the event, but the air show now has gone to a volunteer fire operation for the event.
Okay. With that answered, I can second that motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed, like sign? It appears to be three to two. All right, next, where are we going here? We have no more speakers from the public, so we're still at council. Any other council members want to speak? Yes?
Yes, sir. So, and this is, before we go into this here and lock the vault, earlier in the year, we had before us that there was a marker that had been planned or proposed for the Indian River City. It was a tall, tower-looking thing, 80 grand, and we said, "Don't do that." And to, I think that the feedback from the community was that, when they were in the chambers, that they were in agreement to not do that, both because of cost, design, or so forth and so on. But what I do, what I, what I recalled was that the folks from the community were very much in agreement on, we would like some kind of identification for the area, so some kind of a smaller sign, something denoting Indian River City as an entity. At that meeting, there were some suggestions that I had put out there that were similar to communities and through central Florida. As an example, in Orlando, when you go to Paramore, you go to something, it's literally a sign, maybe this big by this big, that says, "Welcome to someplace." I've seen them in wood, I've seen them in whatever. They look nice, it's a small design, it is not over the top by any means, and I, I thought... And I, I thought the feedback that I heard from at least citizens was, yes, please go that direction, although I don't think that there was consensus from council on that. So before we move a budget forward completely and utterly, I just want to make aware that the amount of money for some kind of a sign for that specific area that says Indian River, welcome to Indian River, Indian River, whatever the case may be, I know that the folks have been fighting for that thing for a long time, and I would feel remiss if I didn't say at least a consideration for an allocation of funding for something to help them out with that.
Mr. City Manager, didn't, we had an allocation of funding, didn't we?
No, sir. You never came to consensus. You had talked about it, and you had said, you'd asked for some kind of design to be brought back before you from the group. That never occurred.
From the group?
Well, I mean, there was a lot of discussion, but council never directed staff to do anything.
So you're asking for what, ma'am?
My suggestion, it is an arbitrary figure. So what I have no idea is how much a sign like that would cost. I have no idea about, you know, I don't even know where to start with that.
Your sign was seven thousand, wasn't it, for the splash park?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so ten is an arbitrary number, but from a reference point, per sign similar to that of the splash pad, probably something alike. So it's probably about a ten thousand dollar amendment.
And where is that coming from?
That's a great question, sir. So number one, I wanted to throw it out to council to see if there was consensus for discussion to that. If that is not the case, then, you know, I'm happy to move forward with whatever we've got.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I just sort of figure if the people in Indian River City who are so connected, I mean, they're on Facebook, they showed me, they're texting, they're Facebooking each other, and I think it's up to, I think the way we left it was they were going to come forward with the design, and I think at that point, we need to discuss it. But I think it's sort of up to them to come forward and say, "This is what we want." We made a proposal, they didn't like it, and I have to say, I wasn't crazy about it either, but let's let them bring it back to us and say, "This is what we look, we want at this point," and then get a price on it.
I would be happy to support that direction. Just like another.
Okay, so that requires no change on any of them.
No, sir.
All right. Any other council discussions or suggestions?
I think we needed to discuss whether we were going to have another inspector, building inspector, and I think that was a question that Ms. Basaka was going to, somebody was going to talk to us about. I'm sorry, Ms. Basaka.
We did have discussion on it. I'm not sure where it ended, so maybe staff can tell us. We said one, then we said two, then we said one or two.
The request that you made at the previous meeting is what are the impacts of not having the additional inspector? The inspectors currently are responsible for inspections of private development, including water, sewage, and drainage, as well as inspection of public works projects such as sidewalks and public stormwater infrastructure. Public development inspections include, private, I'm sorry, private development inspections include utilities, site improvements such as parking lots and landscaping. The development technical manager, who serves as the supervisor, is also responsible for review of site plans, landscape plans, and he does also conduct field inspections as necessary. The current funding levels allow the inspection of private development as the priority. Depending on the complexity of the inspections required, inspections have lagged about two days behind what they normally are. Less time is also being dedicated to the inspections, which in turn has, we have seen increase in the number of complaints because the inspections are not being as thoroughly done. In order to minimize the amount of overtime generated, staff has prioritized private development over the inspection of the public works projects such as sidewalks and utility relocation for road paving projects. Currently, right-of-way permits are not being inspected during the actual progress of the project. We used to send people out to do that. We don't do that anymore, and maintenance of traffic are currently not being reviewed prior to the contract, contractor beginning the project. The, there's also cursory landscape reviews are being conducted, not as thoroughly as we used to. Transferring the plans reviewer to complete site inspections is increasing processing time for building permits, which has increased from three point two days to four days in the last six months. We've kept overtime costs at a minimum by de-emphasizing the public works inspection and landscape inspections. However, currently, if we were, we are generating comprehensive, compensatory time, and that is increased by approximately two hours per employee per week. If paid out as overtime, this would be an equivalent of about seven thousand dollars a year. And the additional impacts also include the inability of staff to take annual leave. There any other questions?
You need one or two.
Just one, thank you. I don't want to be selfish.
I have one question.
Wait, wait, Ms. Basaka, Ms. Basaka, we have a question for you.
I had Tom going after me anyway, but I'd said two.
And just for clarity, so this private, inclusive of residents, so let's say that hurricane comes through and knocks down a bunch of fences. I want to put my fence back up, and I need a permit. Is that, someone going to have to inspect that?
Yes, sir, but in, as a matter of fact, last year, council gave us an additional inspector to do that work.
Right.
So the, the building part of the inspections are being done in a timely manner. It's the site which is being done, which is prior to the building.
Which is, and what I think I heard you say is that it's extra days' time on that back end of it. So if I'm a businessman, and I need to get my stuff done.
That's, that's correct.
This is going to help us out. All right.
Yes, sir.
Further discussion on that? Does, how does council feel on that issue?
Well, I'll start, I'll start. I know that we talked about the two dispatchers, and I think those were something that was really imperative for us, and then there was something that went, the second necessary item on that list. And I can't remember right off the top of my.
No, ma'am, the three items that you asked us to come back with were an additional point five COLA to keep us up with the two point three. That'll put us at two, it'll still put us slightly behind, but less behind than it would be at one point five. The second item was two dispatchers, the third item was a development services inspector.
Thank you. So I'm sort of at the COLA because I think we need to keep up, our employees need to keep up. We're training people, and if we don't keep up, they'll leave for Orlando, Winter Park, someplace that pays better. And I definitely think we need the police dispatcher, so I'm thinking that's where I would draw the line.
Those three items, just to, you'll be raising taxes by point one four three three, which is an additional two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and two dollars, and I think Bridget can tell you how much that will be on each individual tax. That's with one dispatcher, two, correction, two dispatchers, a COLA, and one development services.
So you want to tell me how much that's going to be on the tax bill? Hang on. I had that somewhere.
Then you've also made an additional adjustment of one thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars from your special events reduction that will go back to reducing the millage rate.
Just making sure I get it right, y'all. Be patient. I hate doing calculations in front of people.
Seventeen, roughly seventeen dollars and fifty cents a year on a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollar piece of property in the city.
And did you take that fourteen twenty-four out?
Mm-hmm, that was already calculated.
Okay, good.
Okay, so, Member Diesel.
Pretty much where I stood last week. The COLA is a must, the pay increase is a must there. The two dispatchers is a must to me. The only thing I left to, to think about was the inspector. We've got it now where we're talking seventeen dollars on a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollar home for the three, correct? The COLA, the dispatchers, and the inspector.
Correct.
I'm good with that.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I'm inclusive of all three. The two dispatchers, this hurricane alone, sold on that, so that, and you never want to call, and God bless them, because I don't know if they've still gotten a break or not, you know, so they're still working hard. The COLA, I'm with you on that. And the community development, again, just from a, so to that point, seventeen, so at seventeen dollars a year, that's six fifty for, keep our employees going, six fifty per household for law enforcement. When I call, they're, have some relief and they can get some help. And then you're about five bucks a year on community development, and it's most likely, that's a six-month to a year-long hiring process just to find someone. If we don't do that this year, next year's budget, up against homestead exemption, which probably will go, taxes are through the roof, and whatever cuts we're making now are even worse, we're not going to get that person. I just don't see us getting it. So that's my, that's, I think, my worst consideration, and we're in a growth mode right now. You know, in, in a year where I could foresee it, us not growing as a community, and when I mean growth, I don't mean one or two businesses, I mean three thousand jobs in the area, that's a lot of building. Space X alone, Blue Origin, I mean, that, those are big players, not to mention our redevelopment and Commerce Park and so forth and so on. I just, I don't, I think if we don't do it now, it's not going to happen, and all of the work and steps that have been taken to really emphasize the positive steps we've taken as a whole, whole community for business development, business friendly, so forth and so on, this is one of those that totally supports that, and it's like right on the cusp, and I think we can, I think we can do it. And again, if it doesn't happen, and it takes us a year to hire, and we think it's a horrible decision, get rid of it, but I don't see it happening. So I'd support all three.
I'd just like to also remind council, to Vice Mayor's point, we're, this budget is in a deficit of ten point one million dollars that will be, those things don't go away. And we also incurred quite a bit of damage as you ride around our city. We anticipate thirty-eight to forty days of debris pickup. We've got road damage, we have structural damage in some facilities, so that next year will be a very challenging budget year.
Member Nelson.
I, I understand what Matt's saying, and that, yeah. I mean, I read the, the agenda package for the next meeting, and the number of developments coming in or wanting to come in, and I gotta say, I'm hoping after this hurricane, we make sure that all those housing units are high and dry. But there's a number of, of housing units coming in, and we are going to need somebody to do those inspections. I think we can hold off for a year. My question is, we had the fourteen twenty-four that we put back in, in the pot, so to speak, and reduce the millage rate. Do we want to either give that to the downtown merchants toward their street parties? Because I understand they're hurting. I mean, it, it looks sad down there. Or, it does, I'm sorry. Or even turn around and give that to the city manager to maybe replace some of the lights that are down, the, the infrastructure that's down.
If I could suggest that reduction's probably the prudent thing to do. We will be back before council with many budget adjustments this year would be my, my prediction with the amount of damage that we see.
So your suggestion is to?
To continue to reduce your millage rate by that fourteen twenty-four.
All right, good. Anyone else? Do we do this part by consensus, or we just go right into a vote?
Mayor, the first thing you're going to vote on is your millage rate, but before you do that, we really need to, of course, state the name of the taxing authority, and of course, the city of Tysville, but we need to identify the rollback rate, the percentage increase over the rollback rate, and the millage rate to be levied based upon the budget as you've amended it.
Yes, sir. What I was referring to, though, is the three things that have been asked for, we haven't determined there's a consensus.
Sure, once you have that, certainly, you can do that now.
Yes, the point zero five COLA, the two dispatchers, and the one inspector. Is there a consensus on that, or does anyone object to that? I see a consensus now, sir, yes.
Hello.
This is city attorney, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I was feeling a different.
Sure, at this point, if you've adjusted your budget as you see fit, then it's important that we understand, of course, again, what the rollback rate is, what percentage increase over rollback rate, and the millage rate to be levied to fund the budget that you've just amended.
Okay, so the rollback rate is?
I think you need to discuss the percentage over rollback and what the proposed rate is, or the adopt, the proposed adopted rate is. So with the three additions y'all just agreed upon, the millage rate you would be setting would be seven point seven nine zero zero mils.
Seven point seven nine zero zero?
Correct, and that is eight point two six above rollback.
Say that number again often.
Eight point two six percent above rollback.
Want to make sure I don't get these wrong. Go ahead. Millage rate to be, oh, to be levied, that one.
The millage rate would be seven point seven nine zero zero.
So I got them backwards, yeah.
And it's eight point two six percent above rollback.
Yeah, there's a roll, it says rollback rate is one thing, percentage of the rollback rate, which is the eight point seven six, and then millage rate to be levied.
Right, the millage rate to be levied is the seven point seven nine.
So also those numbers are seven point seven nine.
No, your rollback rate is not seven point seven nine, I'm sorry.
Seven point one five zero six.
Seven point one five zero six. Okay. So at this point, we need a motion to adopt the millage rate?
Sorry, I have one question for staff.
Yes, sir.
That is, with clarity, that that is with the redirection of funding to the youth South Street?
Yes.
And the reduction of the millage.
Right, this would be with the special events grants funded at Friday Night Live at twenty thousand dollars, the Tyco Air Show funded at four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars, Indian River Festival at zero, and the Rotary Chili Cook-Off at two thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars, in addition to the other ones that you all approved at the last meeting.
Thank you.
With thirty thousand being directed towards the South Street area.
Thank you.
Bridget, can you just confirm the rollback rate? I was just looking at ordinance number twenty-six, and it references a revenue neutral rollback rate of seven point two oh four six.
Let me pull it up on here. Seven point two oh four six is the rollback rate.
Because I just heard seven point one five oh six.
I'm sorry, seven point two oh four six.
Okay. I don't know, I'm going to trust on somebody to put the numbers back in. So we have adopt ordinance twenty-six dash twenty seventeen, is that the first one we do?
Correct. First thing you will need to do is a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-six twenty seventeen, setting the millage rate for the operation of the city at seven point seven nine zero zero mils. setting the millage rate for the operation of the city at 7.7900 mils, which would represent...
Sorry, which would represent an increase of 8.26 percent above the revenue-neutral rollback rate of 7.2046 mils, and devoted debt service levy of .4079 mils, which reflects a .0632 mil reduction over the fiscal year 17 rate of .4711 mils.
I don't know why I couldn't remember that. This counts, do I have a motion to that effect?
You can have a motion if I don't have to repeat it.
No, you don't.
You need to say it, to approve.
We would move to approve resolution number, ordinance number 26 dash 217, as set out by our city attorney.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, it's roll call vote?
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
City Attorney, if you will do the honors on the 14 dash 2017?
The next thing we'll need to do is to adopt the ordinance number 27, 2017, adopting the general and related budgets of the city of Tyusville for the fiscal year 2018.
All right. Do I have a motion on that?
So moved, to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
And the next item? Go back to 14?
Yes, sir, the next item we have is approved resolution number 14, 2017, establishing a formal fiscal policy on utility return on investment for the general fund on the city's business type activities. Again, each of these has their own public hearing, so again, before you vote, I would ask you whether you have any cards on that item.
Are there any cards on that item, clerk?
No, sir.
There are not. So, do I have a motion to approve resolution 14 dash 2017?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I think Member Stokel was next, was the second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Need a roll.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call vote.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Now, 13?
Yes, sir, next is, is a resolution number 13, 2017, amending the schedule of fees for water and sewer service by increasing the charges and rates. Again, you could open that public hearing and ask if there's any cards on that item.
I'll open the public hearing, clerk, are there any cards?
No, sir.
I'll close the public hearing. It's council's pleasure. Do I have a motion?
You have a motion to approve resolution number 13 dash 217.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion?
Sir, was it? I want to make sure you said 13, 2017.
Mm-hmm. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
No.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes, passes four to one. That's one negative by the Vice Mayor. Number 28, sir?
Yes, next is ordinance number 28, 2017, amending section 16116 and 16117 of the Code of Ordinances by increasing the solid waste service charges and rates. Again, you could open that public hearing and ask if there's any cards or public desires to speak.
I'll do so. Open the public hearing, any cards, clerk?
No, sir.
I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion on ordinance 28 dash 2017?
I made the motion to adopt ordinance number 28 dash 2017.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, Member Stokel. Any further discussion? If not, clerk, roll call vote.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Number 29, this is the one I was looking for, the last one.
Yes, sir, next is ordinance number 29, 2017, adopting enterprise funds and capital improvements programs of the city of Tyusville for fiscal year 2018. Again, you could open that public hearing and inquire whether there's any public desire to speak.
I'll open the public hearing. Anybody wish to speak? If not, are there any cards, I'm sorry?
No, sir.
There are no cards, I'll, I'll close the public hearing, and roll call, oops, yeah, roll call vote. We didn't make the motion. Okay. Do I have a motion on it?
I'm moved to approve ordinance number 29 dash 2017.
And a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Or Mayor Johnson, sorry. Vice Mayor Behringer?
I just thought I'd let it go.
Yes.
And Member Stokel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. The next item is public comment. Anybody from the public wants to come up and comment? I don't see it. Debbie Shula's gone. With that, if there is nothing else to do, do we have any other things that need to be taken care of, City Manager, that you're aware of?
No, sir, just to note, the debris cleanup began on the 12th of, of September. Our great crews are 17 percent on just picking up the, the light debris, they call green debris. We anticipate about 34,000 cubic yards, it's, it's equal to Matthew, at least, and then another 6,280 cubic yards of construction debris. So, our, our goal is to have, we posted a schedule, our goal is to have this mission complete by the 3rd of November, so we, we hope that our citizens are, are patient with us. We've got some, some damage to roads, some infrastructure that we're also addressing, and it, these will not be overnight fixes, so just bear with us as we bring our, our city back from the worst hurricane in Atlantic history.
I, I believe our, our citizen understands that, as I told you before, I've heard nothing but good things about city staff and first responders and just everyone, and it's a very, very difficult time, so I know, I for one, and I'm sure the council will support it, that we appreciate all that all of you do, and I think that the public as well is showing that, that appreciation, so thank you. With that, City Attorney, is there anything you wanted to add to the?
No, sir.
You've done enough. It's been a long evening. With that, I think we have completed our mission for the evening, and I will declare this meeting adjourned.